Seven o'clock for you. Call this regular meeting of the Board of Alderman's Order. Roll call please, Heather.
Alderman Angel, Alderman Gorman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Here.
Alderman Mackley.
Yeah.
Alderman Simmons. Alderman Wilkins.
Here.
All right, we have a form, barely have a form tonight, so fiscal is going to take place. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everyone had a very, very fantastic St. Patrick's Day. See, someone was...
Not until after the meeting's over.
Okay, is Merritt here tonight?
He's supposed to be.
All right, speak of Merritt, he shows up.
Sorry.
That's okay. As I was going through the minutes, I saw a correction.
What was it?
What was it? I told it. It had two W's, the word was. Bottom of page ten where the Fire Department reports, he refers to Chief Rogers.
Yeah, I know him, yeah. Chief Rush. I guess there are about three places there, so.
Yeah.
Really?
I recommend all places. Which one is that, those in?
General Government.
Bottom of page one, top of page two. The minutes are in the following paragraph. I wasn't sure if that was somebody else's jury.
I saw it this morning.
The double W's?
Yeah. But anyway, that's all right.
On the week, except the consent agenda with the corrections.
The motion to second to accept the consent agenda at the start, I was a fairer stat. All right. Council payable over twelve fifty.
On the week, except the council payable over fifteen, amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
Have a motion to second to accept the council payable over twelve fifty, in amount of five thirty-five, seven forty-eight point five seven. All those who favor stat.
Aye.
Post. All right. Comments from citizens? Please, if you have a comment to make, go ahead, stand up, post my phone, state your name and address, Director. Make a call. I didn't see. I thought there was more people out there.
You thought I was gonna say something, I didn't say I'm here, but...
Okay. All right, carrying on, I'll close comments from citizens. Economic Development Report by the Chamber of Commerce, Director?
She's out, check the date.
I got, I got an email from yesterday saying she went, she went to the doctor or something like that.
She, the one thing we do have coming up is April twenty-fourth, I believe it is, is the Chamber Dinner.
So is it April twenty-fourth, or is that still a guess?
No, that's, I'm, I'm sure that's right. It's, it's a Thursday, I think it's the last Thursday as well.
I just got people asking me, and I can't get a answer.
Got your email?
Oh, no, I was checking my phone receipt by then, but I don't have it anymore.
Thank you.
I was at the last chamber meeting, that certainly was.
Yeah.
Page ten at that time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Economic Development Report? Okay, public hearings. Amendments to fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget.
Public hearing was advertised in the Fire Department Guard for both amending the current year's budgets and adopting the coming year's budget. Copies were at the front counter. To the best of my knowledge, nobody has come in to look at them, certainly nobody has acquired explanations. Like they did such a good job of these. I don't know.
Okay. So fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget. Any discussion?
Well, leave it in the dark, you don't really, nobody cared, or you all just did an excellent job.
Or nobody...
All of the above.
I prefer to believe that we did.
Having no audience for public hearing on this is not a new thing.
Right. I did have several citizens approach me about the twenty thousand dollars for the battlefield. They were concerned that it was quite large some way to be going to the battlefield. They didn't recommend an amount to replace that twenty thousand dollars.
Sure, just going to promote our town and tourism as economic development, I really don't have a problem.
And they're just gonna wash his hands and... All right. Did you have any concerns or issues with the amount?
I did tell people to bring up, you know, specifically what was the money behind the city. You know, fees for services. And then that was clarified a little bit more, you know, past meeting. But just throwing the number out there without any explanation on the other side, really.
Alderman Angel? Do you have any comments?
Well, obviously in a unique situation, having sitting on both those boards, so.
Okay. Alderman Mackley? Do you have a problem with it?
Nope.
Okay. Yes.
I should point out that even if you adopted the budget as it is, that's the line that you can't appropriate, but it doesn't automatically appropriate if there's a contract that would need to be adopted at the end of this meeting.
All right, Alderman Angel? Thank you for coming tonight.
Glad to be here.
What, and what we're talking about right now is the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget. And I had stated that several citizens had come to me questioning the amount that we're giving to the, or that we're allocating for the battlefield reenactment. The twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I just wondered if anybody had approached you with any concerns or anything.
Not a one. There have been things, I've talked to Mr. Chance about it previously.
Okay. Action Agenda? Finance. This is adopting amended fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen city budget. This is a resolution. Requires one reading. What's that? Alderman Mackley, would you introduce us?
You're gonna have to come back to me, I'm pretty moved by the computer.
Um, okay. We'll start on the other side then. Alderman Angel?
I'm passing one microphone.
I was just saying, I got a phone.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Bill number?
Twenty-six eighty-four.
I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-four be given be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-four be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor stat. Aye. Ayes, continue please.
A resolution adopting and amend budget for the City of Centaria, Missouri for the fiscal year of two thousand thirteen dash fourteen. Commencing on April one, two thousand thirteen, and ending on March thirty-first of two thousand fourteen. Uh, move that bill number twenty-six eighty-four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-four be adopted by roll call vote. All those who favor stat.
Aye.
All right, post. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Angel?
Forward.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six eighty-four passes, now becomes resolution number?
Fourteen dash zero one.
R dash fourteen. Adopting fiscal year two thousand fourteen city budget. This is also a resolution, requires one reading. Alderman Angel?
Uh, I would move, or bill number, please.
Twenty-six eighty-five.
Twenty-six eighty-five. I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-five be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-five be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
Uh, a bill to create a resolution entitled a a resolution adopting a budget for the City of Centaria, Missouri for the fiscal year of two thousand fourteen to fifteen, commencing on April one of two thousand fourteen and ending on March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Uh, I move that the bill number twenty-six eighty-five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-five be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four. Forward.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six eighty-five passes, now becomes resolution number?
R dash fourteen dash zero two.
All right, thank you. Permits and license, nothing scheduled?
Still a face, sir.
Legal. Adopting collective bargaining agreements with Laborers International Union, Local seven seven three, this is orders, requires two readings. All your voters? Introduce yourself, please.
Bill number, please.
Mr. Wilkins? Merritt wants me to explain that we corrected this because it was a typo artifact. It said three percent raise when it was actually a four percent raise, and that was corrected in the version we got today. Bill's caught that.
Okay.
The numbers are all correct, except for that one.
Okay.
Bill number, please.
Twenty-six eighty-seven.
I move that bill number two-six eight-six be given its first read by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-six be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Ayes, continue please.
And ordinance authorizing the ratification and approval of a revised collective bargaining agreement with Laborers International and Union of North America, Local seven seven three, and to amend the pay scale. I move the bill number two-six eight-six be given a second read by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-six be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
And ordinance authorizing the ratification and approval of a revised collective bargaining agreement with Laborers International and Union of North America, Local seven seven three, and to amend the pay scale. I move the bill number two-six eight-six be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-six be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Forward.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six eighty-six passes, now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven fifty-three.
All right, authorizing compensation for certain city employees, also an ordinance, requires two readings. Alderman Gorman? Could you introduce this one, please?
Bill number, please.
Two-six eight-seven.
I move that bill number two-six eight-seven be, uh, given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-seven be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled an ordinance to fix compensation of certain employees of the City of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-seven be given a second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-seven be given its second reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
Uh, a bill to create an ordinance entitled an ordinance to fix compensation of certain employees of the City of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-seven be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Forward.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six eighty-seven passes, now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven fifty-four.
All right. Accepting conveyance of sewer mains and lines in southwest country states, flat three subdivision, this is orders, requires two readings. Alderman Angel? Could you introduce this?
Yes. Twenty-six eighty-eight, I didn't remember?
Yes.
I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-eight be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-eight be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
An ordinance accepting the conveyance of sanitary sewer mains and lines from the Country Land LLC to serve lots in southwest country estate, flat three subdivision, with possible sanitary sewer main construction cost reimbursement by subsequent developers to the Country Land LLC as provided by section thirty dash thirty dot one, page thirteen dot one of the Centaria City Code. I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-eight be given a second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-eight be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
An ordinance accepting the conveyance of sanitary sewer mains and lines from the Country Land LLC to serve lots in the southwest country estates, flat three subdivision, with possible sanitary sewer main construction cost reimbursement by subsequent developers to the Country Land LLC as provided by in section thirty dot one, page thirteen dot one of the Centaria City Code. I move that bill number twenty-six eighty-eight be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-eight be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Forward.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six eighty-eight passes, now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven.
Authorizing fourth of July fireworks display at City Recreation Park. This is a resolution, requires one reading. Alderman Mackley?
Uh, bill number, please.
Twenty-six eighty-nine.
Uh, move that bill number twenty-six eighty-nine be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-nine be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
Uh, resolution issuing a permit to the City of Centaria, Missouri to conduct a special firework display at the City Rec- Recreation Park. Uh, move that bill number twenty-six eighty-nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six eighty-nine be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six eighty-nine passes, now becomes resolution number?
R dash one four dash zero three.
All right.
I have a note to Heather I have in previous years, it says a certified copy used to go for the State Fire Marshal. So if you would do that, please.
Okay. Thank you. Amending Centaria City Code to increase compensation for firefighters, this is orders, requires two readings. Yes, sir.
Danny and I did go through all of the check from Fire and from Fireworks, and at this time he's not recommending any changes other than the pay scale of ten dollars per firefighter for call going to twelve, which has been budgeted. Can the Fire Department change the only change being?
Okay. Alderman Angel? Could you introduce this one, please?
Bill number, please.
Twenty-six ninety.
Six ninety. Uh, I move, see, I move that bill number twenty-six ninety be given its first reading, reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, see, an ordinance amending section ten dash seven of the Centaria City Code to change the compensation for members of the Centaria Fire Department. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety? Is that right? Okay. Uh, be given its second reading by title only?
Yes.
Uh, okay, a...
Second. I have a motion to second. That bill number twenty-six ninety be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
Hang with me, we'll get through this. Uh... How many years have I been here? Still don't like it. Okay, a bill to create an ordinance entitled, uh, see, an ordinance amending section ten dash seven of the Centaria City Code to change the compensation for members of the Centaria Fire Department. I move that bill number twenty-seven ninety, no, twenty-six ninety.
Yes.
Be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Ayes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety passes, now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven fifty-six.
All right. For six. Alderman Wilkins, would you introduce this one? Amending Centaria City Code to update boundary of business district where discharge of fireworks is prohibited.
Bill number, please.
Twenty-six ninety-one.
I move the bill number two-six nine-one be given its first read by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-one be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. All right, post, continue please.
An ordinance amending section eleven dash four of the Centaria City Code to correct the present name of a railroad when used to designate the business district boundary where the discharge of fireworks is prohibited. I move the bill number two-six nine-one be given second read by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-one be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
An ordinance amending section eleven dash four of the Centaria City Code to correct the present name of a railroad when used to designate the business district boundary where the discharge of fireworks is prohibited. I move the bill number two-six nine-one be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number two-six nine-one be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. All right, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
By your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-one passes, now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven fifty-seven.
All right. Moving right on. Purchasing. Authorizing contract with credit for economic development services, this is the ordinance, requires two readings. Alderman Gorman, would you introduce this one, please?
Sir, bill number?
Twenty-six ninety-two.
I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-two be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-two be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
Uh, a bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centaria, Missouri to execute contract with the Cent- uh, Centaria Regional Economic Development Incorporated to perform economic development and promotion services for the City of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-two be given a second read by title only.
Second. Uh, Lane, did you have something?
Well, you know that the contract itself wasn't in the package. Because it's not on our computers, it's on credit computers, and I asked Mike last week to change the dates, to update them, and change the amount to the six thousand agreed on in the budget. I had not gotten that back yet. You will have to accept on faith that the contract is for the same services as last year, and you know, the six thousand dollars.
Okay.
But you will get copies when they're available.
Okay. I have a motion and a second that bill number twenty-six ninety-two be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, continue please.
Uh, a bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centaria, Missouri to execute contract with Centaria Regional Economic Development Incorporated to perform economic development and promotion services for the City of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-two be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-six ninety-two be adopted by roll call vote, all those who favor stat. Aye. Post, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mackley?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-two passes, now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-seven fifty-eight.
All right. I think this is the last one, at least. Authorizing contract with friends of the Centaria Battlefield for economic development and promotion for Civil War Battlefield reenactment in September two thousand fourteen. and promotion for Civil War Battlefield Reenactment in September two thousand fourteen. Again, this is an ordinance requires two readings.
And the service contract is part of the agenda that you have there, so it's a two-page contract. And it was for you amended primarily in the matter of legal language and this is the copy you put up in the package this evening. Again, this is not for the whole event, but merely to underwrite the advertising, basically, marketing promotional materials to get the word out early and often across the state and nation about the event and about history of Centaria and the Civil War in general.
Okay. All right. Oliver Bagman, would you introduce this one please?
Yes. Twenty-six ninety-three?
Yes.
Uh, I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its first reading by title only, follows the Fairness Act.
Aye.
Post, continue please.
A bill to creating ordinance and titles, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centaria, Missouri to execute a contract with the friends of the Centaria Battlefield to perform economic development and promotion services for the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its second read by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be given its second reading by title only, follows the Fairness Act.
Aye.
Vote, continue please.
A bill to creating the ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Centaria, Missouri to execute a contract with the friends of the Centaria Battlefield to perform economic development and promotion services for the city of Centaria, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be adopted by a roll call vote.
I have a motion and second that bill number twenty-six ninety-three be adopted by a roll call vote, follows the Fairness Act.
Aye.
Vote, continue please.
Alderman Wilkins.
Four.
Alderman Angel.
Four.
Alderman Orman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Upstate.
And Alderman Magley.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-six ninety-three passes now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-seven fifty-nine.
Two-seven-five-nine. All right. Next we have Pump and Sled at Lime Pond.
Cut up here.
Okay.
As described by my foresee in the committee meeting, I'm going to totally replace the pump and the sled and floats that it sets on so that we can pump out the lime sludge from the settling basins. We'll put it in tanks and straight on farmers' fields. Mike has ascertained that the equipment is exactly the same as what it basically shot at craps and look for, he's comfortable that this will do the job. And if you add the two, the base price and the option, at the second page of the quote, it's twenty-two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars, which is essentially what we budgeted for in the present year budget, so you could go ahead and pipe it in if you so wish.
Okay.
And get us into the situation, we might be able to get some of this on farmers' fields before...
Okay.
They plant.
How long was that old sludge bomb, you know?
In excess of twenty years.
Yeah, it's almost like it's due over twenty.
Randy McDowell was still the system when we split up those ponds and put in all that apparatus, he didn't know how it went.
So that would require a motion?
Uh, that would be correct.
I have a motion that we accept the bid from Letts Van Turpin Associates and the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars for us, Letts.
I have a motion and second to accept the bid, twenty-two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars for the display of pump, follows the Fairness Act.
Aye.
Vote, all right. Fireworks display.
As recommended by the fire chief and myself, we have a quote for a package display from J and M Display out of Yarmouth, Iowa. This would be for all the fireworks and the liability insurance that goes with it. The price is the same as last year, but there are a few more shells tossed in, so we recommend we authorize this, the amount of three thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars.
So, man.
All right. I have a motion and second to accept the fireworks display from J and, the bid from J and M Displays, the amount of three thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, follows the Fairness Act.
Aye.
All right. Police Department File Server.
Uh, to give it up down that, I've got the price down to right around three thousand dollars, but I'm trying to understand from humor, they have two line items for about six thousand six hundred dollars that are basically consulting services for the installation of what they, you know, quoted. So I want to understand what that money's for specifically. Uh, I might go do it myself, but I want to understand, you know, if there's any super secret, I have no clue what that money's really for. I did get the actual cost of the licensing and server down.
Okay. So, do we want to table this until...
Uh, we'll make some phone calls tomorrow.
Well, we're going to recess this meeting.
Yeah, as I say, it'd be for the next, okay.
We could, uh, take it up on the thirty-first. Okay.
Let me just say, I appreciate the acceptance, we went from being able to buy the thing to where we are now, and might get even less than that, I would appreciate acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Number six, pre-owned patrol cars from the highway patrol, two of them.
The chief is presenting the, uh, quotes for two, two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victoria Interceptors, low mileage highway patrol. Are they still trading at fifty thousand, chief?
Yes.
Are they about?
Yeah, about two-five.
Uh, one of these is for fifteen thousand fifty dollars, the other is for fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This being enough that it might play things with the appropriations, we recommend you authorize purchase on April one or thereafter. These two particular cars we're speaking of, they already had the, uh, the emergency equipment there, so hopefully we don't have to spend a day or two...
All right.
Trying to get that on. What we have to do is put a radio in, I think we'll be road ready.
Okay. Do we need a motion tonight, or...
Yes, I would recommend it.
Okay.
I'll have a motion that we, uh, accept the, uh, bid or whatever it is for the police vehicle.
Okay, after April first.
Yes, after.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second to purchase the patrol, or the police vehicles from the highway patrol after April first, follows the Fairness Act.
Aye.
Vote, all right. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there are no objections from the board, when these come in and the department has stripped out all the equipment that belongs to us, we'll take both cars, and I think there's a pickup truck that's obsolete and barely runs, and the park department will take all those down to the auction.
Is that all right? Is that fine?
No. Okay. Okay. But they, but the old blue deuce, one of the cars out there, that old car cleaned up pretty good. If you just want to be rid of them, I get it. I know it's labor intensive to do bids. Here, I know that is.
Mm-hmm.
I settle on a safe note.
We can't settle out there on the street with the sales signs up?
Sure we can.
Get the city out there and make a little more money.
You can't do both. That's the only...
What do you mean you can't do both?
You can't get a quote from somebody and then take it down to the auction and see what you'll get down there.
Well, I know, but you can set a set price here. Is there a set price you can get? You're guaranteed?
No, sir, no. Five hundred dollar minimum.
You know, we can try it for a month or two here and see if we can get them sold for a little more money. They'll take them down there and see.
It's got to be bid out of, on a surplus or not. Can you negotiate a sale?
I can negotiate a sale, but for this kind of item, I think it would cause public dissent if we didn't allow anybody in the public to have the same access.
Yep, that would be probably true.
And so, either just put it in the paper and say for sale by sealed bids, and if you have an idea of what retained bottom line is...
Something like that.
That's fine with me. Use police cars both at the auction and...
What year is that? Do you remember?
Two thousand seven, I think, of both. I think.
Two thousand four.
I don't think, ten years old?
No, they're ten, they're two thousand years. Blue deuce, it's two thousand four.
People think...
That's that blue crown deck, it's got a hundred and fifty. Did it clean up? Did it clean up? And the white car is the one, the white car that we're replacing, that's, um, that's Allison Brooks's car. It's not much of it, but you know, it's good.
I shouldn't be said anything, I apologize, I know it's labor intensive. Not what you've got to pay for the end, but you'd have to pay for the auction services too, which is usually seventy-five bucks. If you have it, if you have it on type for sale, great. I'm going to clean up those two police cars, go through them before I turn them loose anyway. And then look at them. Feeling the board?
You know, we, we seemed to do pretty good last time we sold one in the paper, you mean, probably more than, more than we would have gotten at the auction.
Take one to the auction and take one to sell, we'll see what does it best. Then we'll know.
We'd be better off taking bad one to the auction.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. We probably don't want to deal with it.
Yeah.
That blue car ought to have a fifteen hundred dollar minimum on it.
So, have you checked kind of, or had some kind of appraisal on the car?
I just told you, yes.
Fifteen hundred dollars?
That blue car ought to have a minimum on it of about fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah. I, I don't know if it'll bring that, that's what my head's made of guess is.
Is there no sale fee associated with taking the cars to the auction?
About seventy-five bucks.
Okay, and then they sell it, there's what percentage commission?
I, I, police cars and highway patrol cars in particular are popular items, they will sell. They will probably bring more just by label than police cars.
Okay. You know, this was a big pick at Highland Chief, I don't know how, how much you got to gain.
I, I get it, but I'm, I get, last time we did this, we said, never get, try to sell them and get bids, it's too labor intensive. We did eBay or something like that. Yeah, and the guy backed out. Yeah. Well, this is a school car. Yeah, and we said, oh, that...
Cars are such a commodity that they're plentiful everywhere. If it's more like the backhoe or the road grader, that's going to have a higher value. I can see spending more time on a bid there.
You might, you might be on some...
My, my feeling is that they're three thousand down, let's send them to the auction and, and go on.
I'm good with that.
Would be my suggestion. It'd still be great if you cleaned them up, chief.
You know it will.
There you go. That, they're still good at auction.
They're still good at auction, you know it will.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds like we're taking them to the auction.
But, that was just my opinion, now this...
Does everybody agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. All right, full business.
Myself and Bob, I speed drive and the douche makes the car. It was a tow truck.
All right. New business?
I don't have any, like, with the nine tubes.
You all are going to have new business?
If you can find a tactic there.
Lane, do you have anything new? Lee, do you have anything new?
No, sir. I don't even buy it, doesn't run the tactics.
Yeah, there.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, moving right on.
Hello, how are you?
I just briefly wanted to let you know we have set dates for the audit for this year. We had an interim audit on April twenty-fifth. And then the regular audit will take place Thursday, May fifteenth through Tuesday, May twentieth. And then possibly Friday, May twenty-third if needed. And had some scheduling conflicts over Wednesday and Thursday that week, so.
All right, any other advice? I have one. On. Next Thursday. On March twenty-seventh. Have a meeting here at City Hall with Clean Line Energy. Which is the company that is building the high voltage DC power line from Kansas to the eastern, uh, United States. They've partnered with Hubble. Hubble's been building some of their components. And that Saturday morning was a gentleman whose family lives north of town. And he is resident of Centraria. And, uh, had, they have expressed some concerns with having that, uh, power line go through the state. So everyone, anyone is welcome to, you know, yes.
My pin was around, when is that again?
That is March twenty-seventh, Thursday at four o'clock.
That's here?
Yes. Take that back. That is this Thursday. The twentieth. I'm sorry.
Doesn't show up on my iPhone app. Still a late afternoon message inviting business leaders in the community to a breakfast meeting at the country club.
That sounds right, I heard.
Green Belt Express.
Is that on Friday though, or is that on?
I got, I got it right here, it's Friday, March twenty-first, from seven-thirty to nine.
It's also been referred to as Green Belt.
Yes, Green Belt Express, Clean Line. Two different meetings?
Two different meetings.
Yes, two different meetings.
Two different opportunities.
Yes. Uh, the gentleman that I met with on Saturday indicated that, uh, he was informed that yes, Hubble Power System would be most likely building insulators and components for this, uh, power line. But that they would not necessarily be built here in Centraria. So there's a possibility that they will be built in South Carolina. Yeah. Do you have a question?
That sounds odd, that sounds contrary to what I've been informed.
I, I know. And I, you know, I don't know, I don't have a name of who told him that or what. But that was an indication. He said, I think he said someone from Hubble told him that. So I, I don't know.
Maybe somebody from Hubble can clarify.
I'm sure from Hubble, Centraria, who's been, has commented, will comment to me on that. And I don't think any of them will actually have the, uh, the, uh, that, just said he'd been announced it all in the first place.
Well, I do know that this gentleman's mother and about four other citizens that are affected by his power line went to Jefferson City to sit in on that hearing or the, uh, public event. And they were denied access. So.
Was that, was that with public service equation?
They were not allowed to enter the Capitol building at all. Yeah.
The, the notice I received that you just read about at the country club. Not only has a breakfast and people with, the, the company building the power line, but also says that there would be representatives from Hubble there. And that after that breakfast, people would be giving tours of the Hubble facilities. As long as you're over eighteen and in your clothes, tall shoes.
Yeah. And in this, in this news release, it says, uh, to support the Green Belt Express project, Hubble will invest over nine million dollars in its Centraria facility. So, I don't know.
So it's Friday?
Good time to ask questions?
Yep.
What time is it on Friday?
Friday, seven-thirty to nine.
Friday morning?
Friday morning, yes.
Oh, breakfast, huh?
Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there.
Well, I might be, I'm next three days.
And also the, is there a municipal?
Yeah, I need to talk with John, I'll have to get.
Okay. That's scheduled for May?
Dean, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Twenty-eight. We're hosting.
It's gotta be the twenty-first to the twenty.
Okay, probably twenty-first, I think. We're hosting the M and L quarterly dinner over here. Yes, here in Centraria.
If Hubble Centraria hires on fifty or eighty other people. As a direct result. If they build some of the insulators out of Carolina, does it matter?
No.
I mean, it's us. Fifty, eighty jobs for two years in Centraria as a direct result of that project, the way I understood it.
That would be great. This would be a good time to ask for transportation. But a line like that's going to have all sorts of parts, and I can't imagine all of them being built here or.
Neither can I. And there'd be customer service and there'd be all kinds of stuff that goes with it, would be my guess.
It would make sense, they would also be using a warehouse facility for staging.
And I don't think there has been a lot of studies of DC power lines, high voltage DC power lines going across livestock, uh, farmland. So I don't know what it's going to do. There's a lot of information on the internet to sift through. And he left.
And we know, because it's on the internet. It's got to be true.
At least personally. So anyways, just let you know, there's me, our mechanic, Mr. Parker, right here. That's all I have.
Requesting to recess.
Since the mayor will not be here next week and the thirty-first isn't Monday. We would like to suggest that you recess until sometime Monday, the thirty-first. Pay any last minute bills over twelve fifty that may come up.
Okay.
And to deal with the situation with the first department server.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we recess until the thirty-first.
Six o'clock maybe? Or seven o'clock?
Don't marry me?
I'm Louis.
I'll try to propose if I might be later.
Okay.
This is what I was saying.
So, it's important that you be there for this.
Okay, seven o'clock. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second to recess until thirty-one, May, March, at, uh, seven o'clock. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
All right, post. All right.